Or not. All right, let's see here, it's 7:06, we'll call the meeting to order. Since nobody is at HQ, let's go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance, we don't have to have anybody stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we, Chair, would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda? T O flag moves, do we have a second?
Um, quick question here.
Um, let's pick that one up at the next meeting, that way we can give our chief a chance to expand on what he's doing with the volunteer program. So do we have a second? To approve the agenda, alright Commissioner Lawrence, thank you. And, public comment? I don't see any, alright. And then we will go on to Mr. Smith, our first candidate. There you are, Rashawn, how you doing?
Hello, how everybody doing?
Alright. So, do you want to just take a couple minutes to talk about yourself?
Uh, so I guess, where can I start? Uh, Rashawn Smith, I'm a professor at Shoreline Community College, I run the automotive program there. I've been, I've lived in Lynwood for a little over six years now. I have a wife, two beautiful, amazing kids. You know, kind of, kind of living the wonderful life of a, of a, of a Lynwood homeowner. Well, looking to be able to provide a little bit more within my community here and you know, do, do some things that, that'll impact the community.
Alright, great, thank you. Uh, what are the top three qualities that you think a commissioner should possess?
Um. I definitely think, um, being reasonable, um, being, uh, having, uh, a, a little bit of patience. And I would definitely say, um, being able to see things, um, you know, just kind of step back and taking themselves out of the equation and kind of looking at things that all, um, different aspects.
Thank you. Commissioner Roland? You're muted.
We have many buttons here, sorry about that. Alright, let's see here.
I don't know if it's just me, but I can just barely hear Commissioner Roland.
Next question, I'm gonna grab a different microphone.
Oh no, we can hear you now.
Okay, um, we'll just go ahead and skip ahead to Commissioner Chan, we'll come back to Micah, oh, you're muted.
Oh, I didn't expect to jump into. Hey Rashawn, how are you?
Hey David, how you doing?
Good, for full disclosure, um, Commissioner Daniel introduced Rashawn to me during their parade, but I, we were on the rush, I didn't talk to him, so I followed up a call with him, so I have a conversation with him. So, uh, my third question, I got two questions for you quickly, I think they're similar. Uh, is, what do you see your responsibility to the voter of South County Fire?
Um, so I would definitely, that definitely say that my responsibility is, um, is to the voters. Um, coming in this as, uh, you know, like a homeowner in the area, I know what, uh, from the things that I hear, I know that, uh, there is a lot of things that we need to take care of within the community, um, there's, um, a, a, a large influx of, uh, new residents that's coming into the area, and I know that, you know, with that coming, it's very important to start thinking about, uh, the, the, uh, the things that'll keep, um, our area moving, uh, seamlessly, you know, um, I just think it's, it's, it's very important and, um, just kind of taking all of that into consideration, it's really difficult to wait to the last minute when things like that happen and then we're not very prepared for it. And when we're not prepared, that leads to, you know, um, things that can become tragic or, you know, we kind of get caught, uh, without knowing, uh, how the handle was at, in, at that time, and so being prepared is very important. And I think I can help, um, assist with that, you know, um, on, on the commission.
It's good, uh, well, first of all, I appreciate you really, I think you ran for the office and you're really interested. I think back in Jan, February or March, you were already attending a meeting before great, even told us that he was vacant, so you have been really interested, attending the meeting, I know, uh, somehow you got in, I, I always the last one to know what's going on. Um, so one other question I have said, because we are the board, so do you have any past experience work as a board member? Uh, as a board member?
I, uh, so.
Oh, work for the board, can you tell us a little bit, a bit, a bit, experience on that area?
Okay, um, so I do sit on a couple advisory boards, uh, for, uh, Shoreline Community College, um, as far as the, uh, the automotive program goes. Uh, I kind of helped build that, um, that consensus between, uh, the local dealerships and, um, the college, uh, we kind of helped, uh, the, do those, uh, advisory, um, to the dealerships and help them out, uh, with the, uh, the, the, like, the current, uh, staffing issues and things that we're currently having, um. Uh, some of the other things I help with is, uh, the academic portions, uh, for the college, uh, for, for the automotive program, I would say. Uh, also sit on a couple of the boards for the neighboring high schools again, which is the automotive program. So I kind of have a little bit of a, of an understanding of, uh, some things that, you know, that we, that the, being able to work with other individuals to, you know, to kind of come together co- collectively, collaboratively and be, uh, and help with certain policies and, uh, put things in place for the betterment of, of the community.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roland?
Alright, can you guys hear me now?
We can.
Alright, great, thank you forations on that, um, so what experience do you have dealing with budgets, policies, personnel issues, the kind of the management level, uh, items?
So, the, the only current things that, that I do have, um, as far as budgeting and things go, it's number one, definitely being a homeowner, right, and also a, a co-business owner with my, with my wife, uh, we do have a business that we, um, have been, uh, running for the past, go, I believe we're going on 12 years now, a catering business, so, um, you know, uh, be, being able to, uh, help, uh, uh, our, uh, customers budget accordingly, uh, for whatever, um, receptions and things that they have on, on the level of that. Um, but just also, just, you know, being able to, you know, take care of my own budgeting plans and things like that, I kind of deal with all of that.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Kenny? Return.
Yes, okay, Mr. Smith, good evening.
Hey, I think it'll go.
Uh, let's see, the question, the preset question from me is, uh, can you please talk about your ability to obtain consensus in difficult situations and with difficult topics?
You know, I definitely building consistent consensus is, uh, is important. Um, and you have, when you're looking to solve whatever issues or whatever, um, any type of, uh, anything that you have to, you have to be able to pull yourself out of it and look at it at all sides. Uh, one of the things that I, you know, I've always heard that I was able to hear those, um, uh, those different sides of the arguments, it's not a, at the end of the day, it's not about picking what side or, uh, having your pride on the line, um, things like that, it's, it's not for you. This is policy to make sure at the end of the day that everybody is safe, uh, that the community is running smoothly and operating at, um, full, at full as much as they can possibly do, you know, uh, we can't get to a point where we let our own personal issues, if we can't come to some kind of agreement or, uh, agree to disagree in certain situations because at the, it, it'll affect more than it will affect us in that person at that, at that particular time. You know, it's just very important to have some sort of consensus.
Uh, Mr. Smith, can you, can you, uh, do you have any examples from, uh, your, um, experience, uh, regarding, um, consensus in difficult situations or with difficult topics?
Um. So. Uh, this, this is, this one I, I have to think about, so, uh, I, I would definitely say, um, in, in the, as, as far as, uh, as a professor, as an instructor in teaching, um, being able to, uh, uh, have that communication with colleagues when it's, uh, based on certain academics and things like that, when you think it's important. Um, knowing that, you know, some, and some people just don't feel that there is things that is important at that time. Um, but we, uh, we come to those, uh, those, those agreements when it comes to certain academia, um. I can, I, that's as, as much as I can really kind of go as far as elaborating on it, um, but you know, when it comes to certain education things like that, you, uh, especially in, um, in, in a community college setting, you know, it's important to have that, uh, those, those conversations and know when to, um, to again, see all the, all different sides of the argument, even if you don't feel that it's the right thing, um, but it again, is not personal. It's for the betterment of the, the, the whole organization, you know, and you just have to kind of go with it, you know?
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner T O flag?
Hi Rashawn, thanks for applying and being here tonight.
Hey Chris.
Yeah, my question is, what interests you most about South County Fire?
Um, you know, I've been, I've been watching the meetings for a little bit, you know, um, and uh, over the, the time and just kind of having conversations with, you know, with, uh, friends and family. I've always said, you know what, um, let me start looking into, um, finding ways to do a little bit more for my community. And I just so happened, um, to look in on, um, South County Fire and it, it was, it kind of felt like there was something there that I could, uh, listen into those meetings that I can kind of put my help, uh, put my conversations in. Um, one of the things about, uh, just kind of in, uh, in the, the whole first, as first responders, I'm from New York. Um, so I, I, I lived in New York when, uh, there was certain things that happened and I've, I remember specifically what it was like not having, um, or seeing people work together. Um, and looking at things at the, the, for the better, like I said, for the betterment of, of the community. Um, but just kind of looking into it, it's, I've always noticed that maybe I have, maybe I, there's something there that, that I can help assist with. Um, you, you know, with the, so, with South County Fire, there's, there's just one portion of it, but just being able to do a little bit more in my community is very important. It was one of the things that I've always said that I wanted to do, you know, from coach, from, uh, coaching flag football, co- coaching tackle football, just, you know, doing things in my community, for me is just, I feel is just very important because my kids live here, I live here. Um, a lot of the, the, my neighbors and the people that I love, they live here, they call, uh, Snow Home is counting, you know, it's, it's their home, so they want it protected. And I'm just a very protective person, so if I can do that, and, um, what better way is to serve, uh, my community, you know?
Great, thanks so much.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes, um. Do you have any goals or objectives for South County Fire that you would be interested in pursuing if appointed?
Um, I, I don't have, I wouldn't say I have any goals coming into it, I would definitely say that, um, building more of a partnership and a relationship with, uh, the fellow commissioners is priority, um, getting a chance, um, if, 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 uh, I'm selected, being able to, um, learn from each and every one of you, um, I think it's very important, um, to, uh, to come into, uh, a, a, a position like this and, and learn from everyone that's there, you know? Um, because I would think that it would definitely help me, um, be, uh, an overall, uh, a, a well-rounded commissioner. Um, and again, helping out wherever I need to help out, you know, community is important and you're just, you're just as strong as the team that's around you.
Alright, thanks, um, so you've, you ran for the office and, uh, you, uh, been listening in on the board meetings, so you'd be somewhat up to speed on the, what we, uh, were, what we have to do and what we are doing, so. Um, appreciate that, so, uh, well, thank you very much.
Thank you Lawrence.
Alright, we still have some time, are there other questions that other commissioners would like to ask that are not scripted? Commissioner Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Smith, as you've seen from watching our meetings, um, the, the, the chief and his staff will, on various subjects, will bring recommendations to the board, uh, after consideration, uh, by staff. And a lot of times those recommend, not all the time, but some of the times those recommendations cost money. Um, and so, uh, uh, the, uh, sometimes there's a dynamic where, you know, the staff is indicating the chief, that we just got to have this. Mr. Smith, we just got to have this, come on, we, we really, our considered opinion is, we really need this. And it can get hard if you're a commissioner sitting there, not being from the fire, I gather from what you've said, you're not from the fire service, haven't worked in the fire service. So you've got fire service professionals telling you, come on, we got to have this, whatever it is. Um, and, you know, maybe you're thinking to yourself, I'm not really sure they need that, or I'm not sure. Are you, uh, but it looks like, you know, the rest of the board, I mean, they're not asking any questions, it looks like, yeah, they're just, yeah, good. Uh, are you someone who's just go along, get along, you know, everybody else wants it, ah, the chief wants it, yeah, okay, I'll vote for it. Or are you somebody that's willing to hang out there and say, well, no, now wait a second, I don't like this, or I'm not interested in this for X, Y, Z, whatever reason? I mean, you got to have some reason, but some reason that you're saying, I don't really think so, um. How do you balance that, or is there anything to balance and you just, you know, vote with what everybody else is doing? How, how do you tackle that when you have people that will be, you know, kind of, I don't want to say leaning on you, but they're like, come on, we're the professionals, just do what we say. You're a, you're, you're doing citizen oversight here, governance. How do you respond in that circumstance?
Um, the, I, I would, I would say the only way to respond to that is right now, um, you, we, at, at the end of the day, you have to think about, um, uh, your, uh, policy, uh, your oversight, um, you have to take everything in consideration, um, when it comes to that. Uh, and it's, again, it's not something that, those would be those decisions that I would have to make on my, on my own. You know, you, there's rules and regulations to everything that you have to abide by. You can't just, you know, just go along and roll with the, the punchers per se, just because, you know, everything is very important. Um, it comes down to, it's just the way budgeting is, case in point, um, uh, just, just kind of talking about, uh, uh, my family business, you know, if we needed like a new machine or something, sometimes these machines cost a couple, a couple thousand dollars, you know, you have to be able to, you know, budget where it comes to that, you know, um, is, if there's things that you can do to kind of go all over around it. But also, if there is things that need to be done, again, you don't want to wait to the last minute and then, you know, especially when it comes to, to, uh, uh, a, a fire service that, you know, we wind up, you know, in the, put, get put in a position, um, that we can't get ourselves out of. Um, and at the end of the day, you can't just say, uh, I, you know, I should have voted this way, I should have voted that way. You know, of, of course, you just have to make those decisions as you're going, um, and again, like I said, you remove yourself from, uh, the, the personal aspect of things like that because it's, it's no longer about personal, it's about your community. Um, what you can do for your community, what you can provide for your community, how you can re- represent your community, um, in, in those aspects. You know, that's just kind of how I look at it, um, again, at the end of the day, um, it, it would just be for policy and oversight, just to make sure those things, all of those things are happening the way that they're supposed to. If that answers your question.
Great, thank you.
Do any other commissioners have questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chan?
Yeah Rashawn, I know you have many meeting, what, what you, what we hear, talk, discuss various issues. What do you think the top three issue that's, uh, really pressing for, for the commissioner, for South County Fire phasing?
Um, there, there's definitely, I, I, I would say that there's a couple of things that's, um, um, top priority. But I think right now the, the things for me per, for, for community, um, as a, as a community, I think the things that are important are, uh, preparing for the, 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 the large influx of people that's going to start moving into the area. Um, we have light rail happening, um, we have a lot of traffic that's starting to build up around the area, um. Uh, just again, thinking about the safety of everybody in the area, of the, the response times, um, uh, tho- those are the things that I, I would say it's, it's important. Um, I, I wouldn't, especially given today, you know, today and the rest of this week, we're currently dealing with a heat wave. I know, uh, all of the first responders out there, they're dealing, having a really tough time probably trying to get around. And I don't want these things to affect them doing their overall job. Um, it's, it's just important to everyone within the community, you know, that we all be able to take care of them, we're in, we're currently in the middle of a heat wave, if you understand that.
Yeah, how about the second and third issues that you think we're facing?
This, uh, this, the second and third, what, uh, budgeting, um, kind of what, uh, kind of, uh, Kennedy, Kenny, uh, uh, was talking about, I think it's important, um, and I, I will also say just that, that consensus, you know, being able to have those, those, those conversations and not make it personal.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Rashawn, do you have any questions for us?
Um, no, I have nothing yet.
Nothing yet, nothing pops into mind because we got, uh, about 30 minutes left in our hour with you.
Nope, um, I don't have anything at the moment, you know, I, I definitely want to say that, um, uh, I, I want to thank you all for even considering, um, uh, uh, me as a fire, uh, to come on as a fire commissioner, um, if, I, if it does go my way, I, I'm looking, I'm very looking forward to meeting each and every one of you again in person or some of the, the individuals that I haven't met yet. Um, and working with you, you know, because like I said, at the end of the day, it's nothing personal, is, it's about what we can possibly do for our community. At the end of the day, that's all I care about is making sure my friends, my family is safe and all of those first responders out there that's doing everything that they can possibly do to keep our area, um, moving.
Okay. Alright, thank you. So, Commissioner, since we have good 30 minutes till the next person, I think it's easiest we stick to the schedule, so we'll go ahead and do a 28-minute break. So we'll come back here, actually we'll do 25, so we'll come back at five minutes to eight, does that work for you guys?
We've allowed an hour for each one of these?
Yes.
Let's not take a break, let's move it up, let's, let's get the next person on the phone, this is ridiculous.
An hour? Is Roger available?
I can try to contact him.
Okay, thank you Rashawn.
Thank you, and again, and I'll see everybody in those meetings.
That's right.
Thank you.
Bye.
Did we decide on an hour, did our, did I miss that, I must have been the?
Yeah, in the agenda, it's 7:00 PM is Rashawn and then 8 o'clock is Roger, then 9 o'clock is Carol and 10 o'clock is Michael.
Hmm, you guys are masochists, gee. Yeah, hopefully we'll prepare all the people ahead of time, it might be a little earlier, gosh, who can, who can talk that long? Yes, the Board of Commissioners.
So, I'll wait to hear back from Melissa. Looks like Melissa needs some time to reach out to the other candidates, so I'm gonna call for a 15-minute break. So it's 7:30, almost 7:35, so let's reconvene at 7:50, that way she can reach out to the other candidates, let her know, let them know that this is going significantly faster. And try and queue them up sooner than later.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Alright, so I'll, I'll see everybody here at, uh, 7:50. Alright Melissa, can you bring, uh, Mr. Roger Nystrom? Hi Roger, you're on mute, there we go.
Hi.
How you doing?
Very good, thank you sir. Can you see me?
We can.
Yeah, I got you.
You got a sunny background.
I do, that, um, that's from, uh, the top level of, uh, a resort near Lincoln City, Oregon Beach or Oregon Coast.
Okay.
The, uh, oh shoot, what is the name of that, Spanish Inn.
Okay. Well, do you want to, uh, tell us some information about yourself a little bit before we get into the questions?
You bet, let, I'm gonna try and turn up your sound a little bit.
Alright.
No, can you hear me well enough?
I can hear you just fine.
Okay, alright, well, first of all, I just want you to know, I, it's been a long time since I've gotten so fired up about a position as this one. A long time, so, having said that, um, I want to thank all of um, I want to thank all of you commissioners for uh, giving me this opportunity to uh, tell you a bit about myself and uh, my professional background, most of which falls right within that group of uh, qualifications that you're looking for. And I'll try and explain that a little bit better uh, as we go along. Um, some of my history, um, I'm a United States Marine Corps veteran. I served in Vietnam as a combat photographer and correspondent. Uh, I'm a former business owner. I've managed retail woodworking stores for two national chains uh, very successfully. I've been a member of of a Chamber of Commerce and also a president of that comp chamber. Um, when my son was of the age, I was a co-leader for a Cub Scout troop, which that was uh, um, very challenging, actually. I refereed youth soccer. Uh, I'm the current treasurer of my homeowners association, and I've also been the past president of that. And uh, history wise, uh, last, I've lived in St. Homish County for almost forty years at the same address, which is within the boundary of District Two. So I I know the boundary, I can't give you a lot of street names, but I I I I I know where District Two is. Um, I think uh, I I'd like to present, if you will, uh, some of parts of my skill set that I think is is really transferable into this position. I I I've been fortunate to just have good common sense and a strong work ethic all my working life. Uh, I grew up in Minnesota and um, I guess that's just part of what comes out of the Midwest, but it 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 has served me well throughout my career. Uh, I'm a good communicator, both written and verbal, but also visual for presentations and that sort of thing. I've always been a team player. The chain of command, I learned in the USMC quite well. Uh, I understand collaboration, consensus building, goal setting, and achieving those goals. I'm mindful, patient, polite, honest and trustworthy, humble, and a bit shy. And is it time now for the questions that the the commissioners would like to ask of me?
It is, I wanted to give you a few minutes to talk about yourself, and so we can get to know you a little better than what we read in the packet, what you supplied. So I'll start off with the first question, in that uh, what are the top three qualities that you think a commissioner should possess?
Honesty, vision, and the ability to get things done.
Thank you. Commissioner Roland?
Uh, yes, so what experience do you have dealing with budgets, uh, policy and personnel decisions?
I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner, I I missed the very first part, my I I can't get my volume up here, hang on.
I've been struggling with my microphone, uh, so what experience do you have dealing with budgets, policy, and personnel issues?
Uh, budgets and personnel, uh, it managing retail woodworking stores. Constant day in and day out, working with budgets to meet budgets, to plan budgets, and then working with the uh, employees. And at some point, or s- at 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 some points, it it, I've often wondered which was more difficult? Budgets being sent down or making sure people were at work on time? But I I've done both of that for years. Uh, and uh, have been, I think if you'll see in my resume, quite been quite successful in uh, this in my management of retail stores, which is really just uh, again, just a a lot of the transferable skills that pretty much anyone would could have that that would work well with this position. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Chan?
Yeah, I think before I ask a question, I wanted to uh, salute to you being a veterans for the uh, especially on the Vietnam and the Marine. Um, I think the Vietnam veterans were treated compared to other veterans, I really appreciate your your work in there.
Uh, thank you, I I do appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, Second World War, Korean, they all come back good, but you guys is not good.
Commissioner, you did get a nice wall in Washington DC.
That's true, that's true.
Very large wall.
Very large wall. Um, I have a, also that your background, I reading for your background, President of the Chamber of Commerce, one of our commissioner was a Chamber of Commerce. Uh huh. And also that now you're from Minnesota. One of our deputy chief also from Minnesota, and he also was veteran too, so must be some water in the in there.
We we have special water in Minnesota.
Minnesota, okay.
But when it, when it, when it uh, uh, rains out here, it snows back there. I got tired of pushing snow and uh, moved out here to get rid of that.
Okay, all right, my question to you is that, what do you see your responsibility to the voter, I remind you, we're being elected by the voters uh, of the South County Fire, again, what what do you see your responsibility to the voters?
I I it 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 would be paramount for me to be able to look any taxpayer in the eye and say that we have spent your money to the best of our, to the best of our ability to maintain service. And uh, uh, just, well, yeah, to maintain service at a at a level that I think we all expect.
Okay. Um, so you're working as a board. Uh, the reason that we have seven member, we have various opinions on on the board.
Uh huh.
How do you handle if some uh, but just do you go when you vote, do you listen to the major, or just go along with the majority, or you really, if you something you strongly believe, would you kind of stick to that? And then if you do that, how do you work out the relationship the rest of the board member?
Well, I I think, uh, pretty much everything I do, um, uh, I will look at a task and then I will take my own time to research that to the best of my ability to see what's available, what's not available, what's possible, what's not. Uh, that's that comes from my journalism background. Um, you know, if you're gonna write a story for the Everett Herald, you need to have some, well, in most cases, facts, but I would try and come to the table with as much knowledge of the subject as as I could reasonably expect to get. And then I would listen. Um, and then start to, let's see, co- uh, collaboration and consensus are companion products. Neither one of them, you can learn from a textbook, this is something that you just have to um, experience and learn from experience. Uh, at it it uh, um, this is one thing I don't know, is it do all of you commissioners sit down at a round table and chat things out, or uh, uh, do you just uh, listen to presentations and 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 base uh, your vote on those presentations? Uh, that's question.
Oh, is a question, oh, yeah. We we do have presentation, but many of us do our own individual real kind of research on that, and then also um, prior, you know, prior presidents that that set up.
Prior prior knowledge?
Prior knowledge and prior
Okay.
residents on that, yeah, so so we do on that. Um, actually, I want to mention that you uh, you you're not a, you're a pretty familiar face to a South County Fire, I think your action, you have been I if I remember correct, you you were really strong on the firework, ban on fire, right?
Yes, that's a whole part of my next chapter here. But, no, I um, uh, what going back way into to two thousand and fifteen, I became very involved in banning fireworks in South St. Homish County, because that was the summer that uh, the green belts in my neighborhood were tinder dry. And people were having fireworks unloaded their driveway by freight trucks. And I was very fearful that, um, you know, uh, just like California, if 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 our green belt would ex go catch on fire, it would be just like some of those terrible, terrible, awful fires down in California. And I got fearful of that. And it really made me angry that most of it was illegal fireworks. And so that's when I started uh, getting involved and I um, I think the first time I met you was at one of the council meetings, uh, where you were there representing the fire district, I think first, first fire district. Um,
Yeah, I had time to go District One.
Yeah, District One, yes, yeah, okay. Um, and and um, uh, I just, it it the, I I've testified a number of times in front of the council, and I have come over to the fire district and um, uh, testified, I think, three times. Uh, had communications with your communications people and 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 so forth over the years, and uh, I I think, I think some of some of what you have, the fire district has done, um, it has made an impact, I um, I think I I've mentioned uh, someplace that uh, I didn't I discovered the this position opening when I went to the website to find out how I could get uh, firework banned um, uh, signs to put around my neighborhood. And um, I I I don't know how much of all this uh, helped or not, but this past Fourth of July was the first year in my memory that we didn't experience a war zone here in Wood Sound near Picnic Point Elementary School. It was marvelous, it was like uh, a joyous holiday for once. And um, I intended, if 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 I would be selected for this position, uh, banning fireworks is is uh, high on my priority list of 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 uh, subjects that I would like to get heavily involved in. Um, because we still have a mess out there, the county council has um, I believe, um, I think it's fair to say, drop the ball. And um, you know, they kind of did their job, they banned fireworks, but didn't do anything to follow up, so anyway. Uh, that that I would like to be a part of the fire districts uh, resolution to this situation.
Well, you you didn't give a, you you keep on coming putting us pressure on it, so I I it it seemed to me you're tired on the issue, you don't give up, but anyway, thank you for for the answer.
Sure. Sorry, I get worried.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Kenny, your turn.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Nystrom. Um, let's see, my question from the preset question is, um, can you please talk about your ability to obtain consensus in difficult situations and with difficult topics?
Yes. Wh- what I have learned to do in, within the last ten years or so, is in dealing, working with a group, the first thing I do is it it I'm very mindful of what's going on about me and surrounding me. And in a situation like this, uh, i- if you have a group of 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 eight people working on a topic, uh, some of those people, some of the participants of do a good job at verbalizing their thoughts. Some people, some participants aren't like me, really good at verbalizing, I would rather write it down and have it considered. And a mindful leader, I'll take that position. Uh, and I have done that, is to know which are verbal communicators and which are written communicators, and work with that so that you get if you're just verbal or focused on verbal, you're you're missing a part of the discussion that is there, but just not being offered. And that needs to come out in some way, shape or form, and if you can do that, just by being mindful of that, you can um, create better collaboration and arrive at a better uh, sense of consensus, I believe, d- does that answer your question?
Uh, it does, um, but do you have any um, kind of at the the theoretical level or observation level over time? Uh, do you have any um, specific examples of um, your ability to obtain consensus in difficult situations or with difficult topics?
Yes. Uh, being the president of a voluntary homeowners association is a prime example of, you know, six people coming from nine different directions, all having different uh, uh, different um, expectations about what they should do or not. And to sit down and figure out a way to answer a letter from one of our homeowners, why we aren't as the homeowners association, board of directors, solving an issue. I've done that time and time and time again, I even, I'm the treasurer now, and um, we're in the midst of one right now, where it's going to take some negotiating and um, uh, some some negotiating skills, let me say, that to to be able to do some of these things, and I I I I don't want to get specific, but I think that's that, I I'm I'm doing that, I did it Friday, and I'm gonna do it tomorrow. And and again, I will, I know from being just mindful of how people like to communicate, how I need to address that, to get collaboration and and some kind of a a solution out of it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Teofon.
Roger, uh, thanks for applying and thanks for uh, your work towards trying to ban fireworks, I agree with you. This past summer was a less of a war zone for sure in my neighborhood as well.
Yes.
Uh, my question is, uh, what interests you most about South County Fire?
I it, at my age, I would like to I would like to. Be part of solving some issues. That. South County Fighter has. Light rail moving into Linwood and creating. Chaos supposedly, that's what I've read. Uh, and um. How to deal with that? How how to how to work with? Light rail or the transit system to to negotiate or or solve or? Make. Um. Make plans that that meet both. Parties, if you will. Um. There's a couple more that um. Annexation, I think is something that um. I I don't know the details. But. Sounds to me like it would take um. Uh. Communication skills and negotiating skills. And um. And then um. Um. To 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 make that happen and without much more information, I I I I don't know quite. Uh, would. Would go I. There's. There's something about. Uh. Oh, construction. That um, you've got a lot of building on your table right now, as I understand. And um. How? How do you approach that? I've been around construction. All my adult life. I've I've. Built stuff, I've. Sold stuff to contractors. I I just have a sense. For the construction industry and 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 how you plan it and how you. Uh, how you keep it going and so forth. Uh, project management. Uh, is is a critical factor. Uh, in in uh situations like this, I believe, or it's my opinion. Um, and and I I would like to get involved in that. Oh, uh, I. I don't. I don't want to sound weird, but um. I I'd like to leave a mark. So that, you know, somebody twenty years from now can 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 look at a. Uh, 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 Linwood Light Rail Station and say. Well, you know, there was a guy. In South County Fire that that helped facilitate this or something like that. Okay, just, you know, I. I would like to be able to do that.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lawrence, your turn.
Okay, um. Mr. Nice from, uh, thank you for participating in banning fireworks. And yes, the county council, uh. Uh, made a nefarious decision about the uh. Not allowing the sale of them, so I hope you keep on, keep on.
We we could talk for hours about.
Yeah, that's exactly. Um, let me get visible here to turn it down for my wife there a little bit ago. Um, so. My scripted question, well, you pretty much covered all that territory that's in that question, my goals and objectives, if you were pointed, but uh. Have you watched any of our uh meetings here since you became interested?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I have.
Um. Yeah, it's uh governance. Uh, you know, I had these ideas about what it be to be a commissioner, what it was going to be like, and it's. It's it's all about governance and. Uh, and it's very complicated with all the state laws and federal laws and laws and laws and. How things are done. It's just incredibly complex, so. Everybody has these idealistic ideas about what to do. Um. Anyway, so you watch some and could you ask that question? Do is there time to give? Person to to do do us, are us commissioners talk? About the subject? Yeah, we do. You saw that. We have uh. Um, we uh do a lot of discussing and, you know, some more than others, so uh. The the answer you had before, so. Anyway, um. Uh, I don't have any specific questions other than say, thank you for uh working on fire banning fireworks, so.
Well, my my pleasure, sir. I I'm I I would aim for a quiet South Snohomish County. Before the turn of the century.
That rounds out our questions that we have. Do you happen to have any questions for us in the few minutes that are left in our time together?
Yes, how much time do we have?
Uh, about five minutes.
Five minutes. Oh. Uh. Well, out of all of the questions I have, I think I'm gonna ask you this one. How is the fire district going to? Approach or have already approached? Climate change? And how does that fit into your long-term goals?
I'll answer that.
Okay.
Climate change? Um. Well, if we have less fires, there'll be less impact on the environment. Uh, to answer your question more seriously. I don't think we've ever talked about it, not in my two year and a half years. We're dealing with so many different things. Um. So. Not not um, not particularly relevant, I would say, to us. Other than, well, we did discuss. Electric vehicles at one periods of time. At some point, we will be will be looking at. But mainly for efficiency and stuff. I don't think climate change was a is a driver here at all, but I could be wrong.
Well. If if I would be uh so lucky to be part of your group. I would bring that in as something that we at least need to acknowledge. And. Look at. In 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 future uh decision-making policies.
Thank you. Commissioner Chair. You're a mute. Gets us off.
While I wait now to lick your land. Every year now the fire getting worse and worse, and we have been sending our. Our our trips to to down in California. Now the Yosemite, the oak oak fire. Isn't a huge problem. Uh, California is a lot of problem. We do. At one time, we would try and buying. Rush fire truck and all this stuff. So, yeah, definitely, this was something we need to address. I don't, I'm due to Commissioner Kenny.
Oh, no, I didn't have a, I didn't have a response from Mr. Nystrom on that, but I did have a separate question for him if unless he had other questions.
Go for it, Kenny. You have the you have the floor.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, Mr. Nystrom, I wanted to follow up on um something that you mentioned. Uh, and I was interested about managing employees. You described that you had um. Uh, managed, I think you said two woodworking stores. Over time, and you had spent a lot of time uh working with budgets and managing employees. I want to ask you a little bit about managing employees. Because at the board level, we don't. Well, you know, we have three hundred plus employees at South County Fire. We don't manage all but two of them. The chief manages uh basic, just about everybody. But we do manage two employees, our executive assistant to the board and the fire chief. Um, and so we do have significant, you know, management oversight in that way because we oversee the CEO. Um, so we do touch on issues, and even though we don't directly manage other. Um, employees, certainly with the senior staff, we're aware of. Shall we say, management issues that may arise, uh, high level eight, I call them high-level HR issues. Uh, that come up, uh, will come to our attention. Um, but I was just curious if you could offer some thoughts about um. Managing employees, what's the uh? What, how do you approach it? When you want to manage an employee and also provide feedback either? You know, on some regular basis or on an annual basis? How do you approach that?
In 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 both of my experiences, multiple-year experiences uh in managing retail stores. Are we about to run out of time?
You can finish the question and then we'll call it.
Okay, all right. Um. I I was hired. To. Come in and. Fix. Stores that were on the verge of collapse. So, um. It it. Manage in the budget was fairly simple. I just had to tell. The the head shop. Uh. What I needed. To fix it. And in terms of employees, it was um. Sometimes it has to get quite brutal. In a situation like that. I remember one where I walked in, I had the first meeting. With uh my uh staff, retail staff. And uh, I knew that about two-thirds of them were gonna walk. At the end of that meeting if I wasn't successful. And uh, it I I literally just said, look at. I've been hired. To come in here and and make this store what it once was. Number one. Gross profit retail store in a chain of twenty-seven stores. Are you with me or not? And they didn't quite understand that, so I reached up. We had the, we were had a standing meeting. In the lumber room, and I just reached up. And dropped the board on the floor. And I said, if you're with me, come to this side. If you don't want to participate in this, stay where you are. And I got seventy-five percent of the people, just by that simple statement and action, come over to my side. The rest of managing people. Sorry.
I've got a question.
I I'm I'm not, I I lost you and I don't know how to get back.
We can see any.
We can start, we can hear you.
There we go. Okay, um. In terms of managing employees past that point. It really was um. Sitting down. And I I think you you asked the question. I'm very mindful of, I I I I always ask leading questions of people to find out. Who they are, where they're coming from, what are their issues and so forth. With an employee, if you sit down. And fairly talk to them about things, you can find out stuff that, you know, a. Uh, check-the-box human or an HR form will never discover. And that I always use, I've I've always been a people. Prone. Manager. And not. Not the, you know, I I. Old-fashioned HR, I guess I'd I'd put it that way, because I don't know what yours is. But I I've always been very successful in 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 managing people and money. In in that situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last question goes to Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes, uh, back to um climate change. Well, you know, actually, um. The bigger question of climate change and what we could do about it, there's not a whole lot of impact we have, but you were asking about. I think your concern is about fires and my concern too. First thing I did even before I joined the board, I had a meeting uh with the um emergency management, head of emergency management of South County, I mean of of Snohomish County, and hey, what's? Being done? Because I wanted to know, yes, if we have an uh like the summer we had last summer, combined with wind, this whole urban area, at least the. The forested areas like where I live in. And maybe it sounds like what you live in could go up and be a bunch of embers after, so that, yeah, we and we are very much involved in firefighting, uh, forest fires. We send crews out. Yeah, we're we're really involved in that, just not the the whole bigger issue of climate change and what to do about it, if you actually do believe there is climate change, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, yeah, thank you uh so for, I think you uh. You have been um publicly, you've been active in the in your community and stuff, so thank you for the HOAs and the next thing, very much, uh, appreciate it.
It it it's hard not to volunteer for things like that.
Thank you, Roger, for taking time out of your evening to sit with us.
All right. You, are there any other questions that I could answer or?
No, that's the time that we have.
Done time, okay. Well, I really appreciate the opportunity to do this, and I hope that. Uh, I've presented enough material. In in a professional way that uh. You will be able to choose me as your next commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm contacting the next candidate to let her know that we are ready for her to join.
Thank you.
That was an interesting question about. Climate change. Uh. I don't think that's our purview uh in any way, but definitely, uh. We definitely gotta be working on uh. That whole forest fire thing. When I live in a place called Wood Trails, you get a little concerned when it gets dry. Have you fallen asleep yet, Greg?
I knew that was coming.
Right yet.
All right, it looks like Carol's logging in now.
Carol is in the waiting room. Are you ready?
We are.
Thank you.
Good evening, Carol.
Hello, hi.
Welcome to the uh to our program.
Thank you.
Want to take a couple minutes to introduce yourself and talk about yourself a couple minutes before we dive into our questions?
Oh, boy, there's lots of stuff. My name is Carol McMahon. I live not too far from the um. Our house on one eighty. our house on one eighty eighth, I believe that's number fourteen. I've lived in Linwood for thirty years and raised my kids and now my grandkids here. Pretty happy with that. And since retiring from my primary job a few years back, I've been getting more involved with my community, so looking for opportunities to serve. And I'm also very much involved with environmental issues. I love rain gardens. And yeah, that's it for right now because I'm still kind of anxious to understand what else you'd like to know and, and we can get to it.
Sure. So I have the first question and what are the top three qualities you think a commissioner should possess?
Approachable, accountable, and humble.
Thank you. Commissioner Roland? Alright, here. So what experience do you have dealing with budgets, policy and personnel issues, kind of the business side of things?
Let me say I've purposely not taken managerial roles. I do much better as a program or project manager, which is what I've done in the past. What I've done in that case has, I've worked with teams including finance and engineering, purchasing, inspection, supply chain, a variety of things, seeing a project through from beginning to end, representing the leadership in that particular case. So in that the projects that I'm thinking of were with a large manufacturing firm. And my communications were in addition to the team I worked with, with the executives for the programs that I was representing. I have worked in the past as in a facilities department for Seattle Housing Authority. I've been concerned with purchasing hood homes for a large family and remodeling them or buying new. I've been involved with a policy decision in the sense that I've helped them achieve a decision in complex issues or competing concerns or interests. So I believe that may have answered most of your questions. Let me know if you need more.
Thank you. Commissioner Chan?
Yes, thank you for coming, Carol. So as a commissioner, we elected by our taxpayer. So we will rescind them. So my question is that what do you see your responsibility to the voters of the South County Fire?
Well, one of the things I mentioned is transparency. So my responsibility is to help them understand of what our decisions are and what our future plans will be. So I think communication is really key. Helping, helping them to understand that their safety is a primary concern. And looking at ways that we can help them achieve that.
Okay. So if you joined the board, you were working with six out of people, a member of seven. Have you ever experienced in the past a board experience and you can share some with them? Either you're as a board member or working for a board?
Um, I've been working on two boards recently at this point in time. I'm a board member for the League of Women Voters and also with the community board that's supporting the GMA planning. They're working on updating the comprehensive plan. I'm sorry, can you hear me okay? Cause sometimes, okay. Thank you. So I've had, I'm experiencing that right now. Prior to that, I'd had more responsibility with community groups like PTA, those kinds of boards. But yeah, the community, that would be my biggest extent and maybe some involvement with my local political organization.
Yeah, this board is a bit different. We're governing board. That means we, the port, the chief is reporting to us. So we have all various kind of a opinion. Of course, that's, that's the beauty of a board. So what if you in the situation, you're in a minority vote, minority opinions? Do you fight for your opinions or you just can't go along with everybody and just vote like anybody else do? Or you still want to speak up for your opinion?
I'm fighting for women's rights right now. I would say that in the largest discussion, it's in the minority, but I would fight for my opinion. And, and I don't want to say that I wouldn't consider the circumstances of that. However, I would also understand that 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 is sometimes what has to happen, but I won't let it go without my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kenny, you have the next question.
Yes, thank you, Ms. McMahon. Thank you for joining us tonight. My question from the preset questions here is, please talk about your ability to obtain consensus in difficult situations and with difficult topics.
That's pretty broad. Usually when it concerns finances or deeply held beliefs, it can be very difficult. Listening is primarily the beginning for that and trying to understand where they're coming from. It's really important if you're ever going to achieve a decision to establish what you're agreeing to. So if everybody has a clear idea of what that is and their opinions or their input in that is respected, then we'll have a better opportunity at achieving consensus. Did I get that? Okay.
Can you, can you provide any examples from your experience or past regarding obtaining consensus in a difficult situation, let's just say difficult situation?
Sure, most recent was the Washington State Convention. I was a delegate and there were a couple of issues that we were discussing with regard to the platform. And helping some folks understand the importance of that was difficult because I had never dealt with them before. And because the opinions that they held or had were deeply held and yet we were able to reach a consensus at the end of that. So that was the most recent experience. Projects in the past have been in whether I was reporting up or reporting to my team, helping them to understand what the reality of the situation was. And again, agreeing on what, what the objection, objective or our goals were in the end, what it was that we all wanted to achieve. I nothing comes out as being a difficult, a challenge, yes, but it just means working harder so to try to understand. Again, listening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tiafla, you have the next question.
On mute?
Oh, you're still on mute.
Sorry about that. Yeah, thanks for applying tonight, Carol, and being here. After my question, I'm gonna go on black screen because I'm managing my small child right now, but I'm listening.
Totally fine.
My question is, what interests you most about South County Fire?
I like to become involved in things that affect me. So I currently, my community is where I find an opportunity to spend time and fire in particular, I'm thinking about the challenges to the environment. Maybe some informational or decision making that can be made with regards to planting. That would be part of a community educational event. Things that would help with the change in our, our weather and our climate and, and being less of a threat. Understanding the structure and the organization and the activities of the fire department. I wasn't real excited about South County Fire to begin with. I would say a few years ago with the vote. But now the opportunity is here where I could represent my community and ensure that Linwood has a voice. So I would like to I thought that sounded pretty good. I like that.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawrence, your turn.
Yes. Well, I guess I won't ask how you voted to get, you were, you live in the city limits of Linwood? Yes. You were able to vote on that? So I want to ask you how you voted. The, do you have any goals or objectives with South County Fire that would you, that you would be interested in pursuing if appointed?
A good question. I would like to see them, like to see a bit more community involvement and information. I'm not uninvolved. I'm not uninformed. But I find it could use improvement. And I would like to see it become more of a presence within the community. At least within their awareness and people feel, again, people wanting to feel safe. I think that I'm a quick learner. I could learn and understand the priorities and the contributions that I could make in that respect.
Okay, well, thank you. So would you like to pay more as a taxpayer and get more service? Because we can, if taxpayers want, we can do a lot more. We're doing something now, community paramedics, which is a plan that makes basically welfare calls because we know who the frequent flyers are that really would benefit by that program and that costs money. And we can do a lot more. Would you be willing to tell the, your taxpayers that, well, we want to double your, what you pay? Because you're gonna get a lot more. Would that be along your lines of thinking or like some people that I know in the past that would have said, are you kidding me? You know, I'm gonna cut in half. So where do you, where do you, would you be able to have any comments to make on how you would feel about that?
I realize it's a hypothetical, but not very far fetched. I, it's always difficult to tell people about what their, their money is involved with. But I also know that if people feel that it's worth it and often their safety is, then they'll understand or rationalize for themselves. So it's a lot more complex question that you're asking me than this interview would be worth. But I think that it's not off the table. There still has to be some give and take on a lot of things.
All right, thank you. That's a good answer and appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kenny, you have a follow up question? You're on mute, Commissioner.
Sorry about that. Ms. McMahon, I wanted to ask you a little bit more about being a member of the League of Women Voters, the Board of the League of Women Voters for Stonefish County and the Linwood Comp Plan Advisory Group. For the, for the comp plan, the South County Fire has actually been entertaining the idea, although I, I, I believe we're not going to do it. But trying to get impact fees from the county and also the cities that we serve would be in Linwood included to get impact fees. We've been thinking about the comp plan and comp plans of our adjoining jurisdictions or jurisdictions within us for many years. And comp plans, there can be weighty considerations and lots of politics at comp plan groups. And I wouldn't, I, until a few years ago, I would not have said the same about the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters has, serves a great purpose in, in, in enhancing and expanding and trying to promote voting, but not, but people don't seem to be that excited about it. But recently, many people are very interested in voting and voting processes. And I have to believe that the board is in, in, for both boards and what I'm getting at is are weighing in or commenting on or taking actions in areas where there's a lot of public scrutiny or some public scrutiny, a lot of interests, significant interests that are at play. And I was curious how you approach important decisions that are made at both boards. You know, when there are competing interests, maybe it's going to be a divided vote. It's not all unanimous. How do you approach important decisions in trying to reach a decision that you are comfortable with?
Great question. First off, let me say that the inclusion of my participation in those boards is not to say that I can speak on their behalf at all. Okay, it was just to indicate that I am engaged in my community. How would I handle it with their interests and competing interests if there were any? The same as with any other conversation. I respect their opinion. I expect them to take the information that I have to offer as well. And in the end, we'll come up with a decision that will work for both groups, both parties involved. Again, like I said, in a difficult decision, anytime you're making an important decision, you really need to agree on what it is that you're trying to achieve. And if we can get aligned to that and the outcomes that we all want to achieve in that, then I think that we can do what's necessary to find the results that we're looking for. I'm not opposed to having my mind changed either because that's part of the give and take of it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chan?
Yes. Have you watched any of our meeting or do your research about South County Fire?
I listened to your last meeting. So yes, I have done some, I have done some looking at your bylaws and amendments. I've done a quick review of the current budget for the twenty one, twenty two budget. Yeah.
So what you think, what you think is of three, the top, right, top issues of facing South County Fire?
Right now, it sounds like somebody needs a roof. So I think you guys decided on that just last week. But South County Fire needs probably, I, I think that I'm not as well versed. I could make something up and tell you. But I would say that if you're willing to take a chance on me, I definitely would give you the time to find out what I could about that and offer the best I have as a suggestion as part of the, the commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
Ah, boy, I had noted a couple of things. Mostly I was looking at how you interact with each other. How often have you held emergency meetings and, and what are those typically with regard to?
Um, the time I've been on the commission, we haven't held an emergency meeting. Maybe Commissioner Kenny or Chan, Ben Longer can speak to that question.
We, we haven't had any emergency meetings. So it'd be a very rare circumstance where we would meet the statutory criteria for that. And we can hold a special meeting with a day's notice. So effectively more likely than not, it'd be a special meeting we would hold. And we've only done special meetings on a day's notice. I think once in the last twenty years. So it's pretty rare that we're doing any type of emergency or special meeting with very, very short notice.
Okay, no, I was just curious because it sounds like it, it could have some serious consequences the decisions. The decisions. I'm wondering which committees had been served by the, uh. Well, I know that he used to be the, um, the chair actually, but I'm wondering what committees would be. Considered for this position once it's filled.
Committees? Committees within, so right now we don't have two subcommittees. One is the bylaws committee and then the other is just the, uh, intergovernmental regional. ization committees. So, um, that would be a conversation that me and that, uh, pointy can have. Which to serve on.
Okay. Fair enough. No, I think that that's probably. Probably to extend of it. I'm wondering how long you will need to deliberate and how long it would be before you would have a decision. If you would be willing to. As a group or one of you or through Melissa provide some comment on, um. Why I was not chosen if that were. Your decision, which I'm really hoping it's not. But, uh, I understand there's a play of having a better candidate or not. All of that, but I'm curious about what your thoughts might be about how I could improve. To serve the fire commission.
I can't speak to that. I don't know if we've done that before, if the commission has done that before. Is that something that? Commissioner Chan or Kenny has any experience around?
Okay.
We, no, we, uh. Typically the, uh, chair, well, first, uh, we are very likely to have a decision tonight. So the winning candidate will likely be advised tomorrow morning or perhaps sooner. And, uh, usually then the chair will also then call the other candidates when we have, our current pool is four. We have four candidates we're interviewing tonight. Call the other candidates and let them know, uh, and at that time that'd be an opportunity to ask about the, you know, how, what, what could I have done differently in my presentation? And or once, once the decision of the board is, is handed down, then you're free to contact. Any of the commissioners also, if you wanted to ask the same question separately from talking to the chair. About that. So, and feel free to do that, to reach out because, you know, you're our constituent. We're here to serve, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Chan, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I didn't want to, I do not want to emphasize the negative, not, well, you did something wrong. It's just we. The decisions that one candidate's, we feel at that time more fit in the situation, but also I encourage you, I, I'm not sure. I think that. The, the position you, your district two is going up for election next year. So I, so I, I think there's also a, a large position is up for election. I encourage you, you don't get appointed, I would. Encourage you to, to run the election for that both either position.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol, for your time tonight.
You bet. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Melissa, is, uh. Michael available?
I have just notified him to log in.
An hour ahead of schedule. Way to go. Yeah, short and sweet. I, I, uh, well, we'll save that for the executive committee there, but I like that.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you. If you're going to make a decision this evening, is that part of the executive session? For which I am not allowed.
Correct.
We might make special circum, uh, special, you know, exemption for you, Penny. Just kidding, just kidding.
The, the deliberation about it is in executive session. The actual decision has to be in public session. We will, we will come back to public session to make any final decision.
Thank you. I will just turn my computer around and you can do your. Session and then I will back. Thank you.
Hey Penny, you could send me and, you know, or call me up to answer that question I asked you earlier. You can say it in private, you know, I will understand if.
What was the question? Well, which, which of you are my favorite? I already told you.
Right.
It's gotta be sad.
Oh, well, he's not a commissioner.
Yeah, but I'm not a politician. You are, Mark. You're my favorite.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. I thought so. I, I kind of expected that.
I don't know. You guys were talking about who's the oldest in your group.
Yeah, who looks the oldest? Me or David?
I think it's me.
I think I have you all beat.
Well, I'm ninety-five.
Our candidate is in the waiting room.
Thank you.
Hello, can you guys see me?
Uh, we can see the wood paneling.
Wood paneling? Oh. Oh, um, I think that's because there's a camera on the backside of this thing and it's looking at the wall. Well, I guess I must have, uh, flunked my interview here because, you know, if you can't get the camera to flip around, then there's, uh, definitely a problem.
Turn your computer around. Yeah. They'll tell you when you're, there we go. Look at that. Okay. Hope someone older than me, no. Hi, Michael, how you doing tonight?
I'm fine, thank you. What'd you guys want to find out?
Well, thanks for coming on at nine o'clock instead of ten o'clock.
Sure.
Do you want to, uh, begin with, uh, talking about yourself a little bit for a couple of minutes before we get into the questions?
Sure, you bet. Mike Frinoff, if you don't know who I am, um, been in emergency operations, emergency services for a long time. About nearly eleven years with FEMA Region Ten, was an operations officer with them and traveled on the. National Incident Management Teams, Regional Incident Management Teams, uh, prior to that, worked with, uh, keeping install a fire, uh, fire department as a volunteer fire lieutenant. EMT originally out of California, about eight years of EMS out there in LA, uh, some of the tougher stuff, if you will. And, uh, in the nineties also had a video production company and so kind of a multi-talented kind of, kind of person. I happen to live in the area that I guess you're recruiting from, uh, you're have a very specific geographic restriction on who can participate in your. Chiefs or your commissioners positions. Um, I'm currently serving right now, uh, with Cascadia Emergency Management as a service that I started about five years ago. As the acting, uh, chief of emergency management for the Michael Shoot Indian Tribe. So, uh, currently just engaged with. Preparing for and responding to our heat event that we have going on right now. We also do operational supports. I'll have myself and a couple of medics out at their pow out this weekend. So I weigh one hundred and ninety pounds right now. Check with me on Monday. I have a feeling I will have lost some weight. As a result of the heat. So what, what do you all have in mind to ask?
All right, we have the, uh, list of six questions and then some of the other commissioners will have other questions in addition to their scripted question. And so I have the first one in that, what are the top three qualities that you think commissioners should possess?
That's a good question. You know, my experience with commissioners, uh, really is, is involved with keep peninsula. I don't know if you guys ever follow other fire districts. But, um. Being able to get along is paramount, right? Consensus, being able to see what the. See what the vision is and move towards the vision versus look at history of. Potentially voting, you didn't vote for the thing I wanted, so now I'm going to vote against the thing that you want, you know? That's a division and then to me, that's a, that's a real downside in politics here in Keppin. It's like we had two commissioners that so hated each other. We had to post a deputy between them for every meeting to keep the peace. So, um, I can't stress that enough. And the interest of the commissioner, instead of being aspirational, I want to be mayor someday. I want to be the county executive. Whatever it is, is a stepping stone for a political gain. At least for me, my personal take on it is I'm more into the success of the fire department. Do you have what you need to be successful? Are we looking at the twenty-first century and beyond in terms of those kinds of standards and equipment? And are we operating safe? And what's the potential growth, uh, potential for the district, uh, for example? So the commissioner is not looking forward, not in a cooperative spirit. And, um, certainly not in a place to also have a degree of understanding. What the hell the fire service is about. It's a mixed bag depending on where you go. It could be combination departments. You may have to deal with unions, you may have to deal with, uh, volunteers. Each one of those have a different tier and a different level of respect depending on, on where you're from. So I would say in a nutshell, you have to be collaborative. You have to have vision that is shared amongst the group. And you have to understand something about the fire service, uh, versus thinking that maybe someday you'll be the treasurer or something like that, you know, down the way. And I will, I will say this, you have to excuse me, um, it was so hot today and I just got off. Having to do some major work in the house and as you pointed out fairly, it is late. Um, and I was just, I'm absolutely exhausted from the heat and doing construction projects, so. Not exactly catching me at my best, I'll put it that way.
Don't worry about it. Um, so I guess I got number two here and that's, uh, kind of on the business side. Um, what experience do you have dealing with budgets? Um, uh, just as a background, uh, the budget for, for South County Fire is around ninety million dollars. Uh, so large budgets, but you know, any budgets, policy and then, uh, personnel issues. So kind of on the management side of things.
Yeah, you know, as a business owner, I'm the guy that runs everything and has to set up all contracts, um, negotiate with different folks. So to give you an example, Cascadia Emergency Management, uh, has been for the last five years a principal entity that it has taken. The lead, if you will, for emergency management for the Michael Shoot Indian Tribe, one of the largest tribes and most wealthy tribes in, uh, the Northwest. And as part of that, it's my job to ensure that they have their preparedness and readiness. And so naturally we have to come up with a budget for them. To tell them what the services will be and these kinds of things. Uh, as a, um, manager for FEMA, uh, I was a, what they call a GS thirteen supervisor. So that puts us in the management category. We have budgetary, uh, requirements and restraints. Uh, I ran the Pacific Watch Unit. For FEMA Region Nine in Honolulu for a number of years. So, uh, not only do you have people they're reporting to, you also have a uniqueness in, in the sense that. You'll have strangers suddenly come to you and be handed to you for care and feeding and that's on a budgetary state, uh, state as well. Because in a disaster, you have to surge an organization. And, uh, with FEMA, for example, you have something called Fun Code Six. Fun Code Six is a, is a very dynamic and open source, um, bucket of money, if you will. So as you're writing mission assignments and these missions assignments can be. Say, you know, ten thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, a million dollars, you know, where your tasking corps of engineer, the core of engineer, for example, for. For creating, uh, temporary housing or you're ordering and assigning aircraft, uh, helicopters, fixed wing, whatever it happens to be. Each one of these all have a line budget and as the operations officer, you're responsible for. Looking at each one of those and tracking them within the system. So big monies, little monies, peoples, uh, you know, they, they come in various shapes. Uh, at least in my experience. So, uh, as far as tracking something in a county system, uh, no, I don't, I don't have. Experience managing nine thousand or nine million dollar budget, but I'm sure, I'm sure at some point, uh. You guys, uh. Unless each one of you are an expert in that area, probably rely on each other for counsel and also for, uh, certain. Subject matter experts to come in and, and consult with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, okay. And so here, number three goes off to Commissioner Chan.
Hey, Michael, uh, thank you for applying and coming to at nine o'clock to come in being interviewed. Uh, here's my given question to me is that, what do you see your responsibility to the voters of South County Fire?
That's a good question. You know, and I probably should acknowledge this too. My interest i- in becoming a fire commissioner solely based in the areas of. The successful fire department. Serving the citizens. Of which I get to include myself, right? Because I'm in the center of the circle and whatever we do here, I get at my house when I call nine one one. Which I've had to do a few times, um, and. From a political point of view, and I'm not necessarily interested in that kind of thing as a ladder or, or those kinds of aspirations. So when it comes to citizenry, when it comes to why should people be looking towards me as, as somebody, uh, first off. I look at it from an operational standpoint. I look at it a functional standpoint and also grill. Anytime I see a fire operation that's going on. Do they have the right equipment? Do they have the right personnel? Are we doing the right things in order to satisfy what it is they're, they're needing, you know? NFPA changes their, uh, rules all the time. And so what that translates into is usually. Annual or biannual replacement of equipment or expansion of, uh, training, uh, these types of things usually, usually, uh, meant to, uh, keep. Fire personnel safe or any EMS personnel, let's not exclude them as well. So. In looking at what the district would, or the RFA would be up to, it's really, are they meeting their requirements? Are we future casting? Uh, you know, let me give you an example. How many LGBTQ A, uh, uh, folks do you have in your department? Uh, is this something that you're open and inclusive to, to represent the entire community? What, uh, you know, what efforts and outreach efforts do you have there? There, there are certain functional things that, that were, the commissioners are responsible for. You know, hey, is the apparatus in the bay? Yeah. Hey, is the fire station falling down? Is it a sick fire station? Is it something that we have to replace? But at the same token, we also have to represent and reflect the community. If we're not showing within the base of our employment and, and so forth. The same people that we're serving, then, um, there could be a disconnect there. So I would say diversity is, is strong in my opinion. Also preparation readiness, uh, and being able to integrate with other departments. I, part of the lessons from nine eleven, of course, is interoperability. Can we enter, can we successfully integrate with, uh, Michael Tio? Is Michael Tio integrating with us, for example? Should someday the RFA assume Michael Tio and incorporate that into its district? Um, I used to know the fire chief there and we'd have these discussions periodically about the cost benefit analysis. And of course, the city council with. Michael Tio sees a, a one to one dollar ratio. So for every dollar they have to spend on infrastructure, they only get a dollar back in taxation. But at the same token, um. They are maybe potentially, uh, missing the bigger picture about affiliation and, uh, especially when it comes to acquisition. Uh, you have better buying power if you're a larger organization than a small organization, for example. So I think, um, I think to answer your question would be diversity vision for the department and inclusion. Looking at how we integrate with other, other entities within the, within the area.
Okay, I, I get another questions that, uh, as, as you know, your, your, your background is mainly on. Emergency management, which is a bit different from fire, fire department, which they do the daily run and everything else. Uh, definitely, we also belong, uh, I see Chief, Chief Hobson here, so he probably can distinguish that much better than, than I do. So, but I do, um, I look at your background from South Carolina. You, you've mentioned about advisory board. I think the structure will be different. Actually, we are governing board, not advisory board. So how, the, the question is that we have seven different opinions members. So how do you work with a situation that a diverse opinion and, uh, your opinions in the minority part? How would you resolve that issue? Do you just go ahead and vote with the, the majority or you really? Kind of state, stick to your opinion and vote your way?
Uh, that's a loaded question. Um. You know, it really depends on the issue. Um, and if the issue is such that. The parties can see, I mean, think of a mountain like this, right? And you got folks on one side, one side, until you climb that mountain, you're not going to be able to see each other's opinion. And seeing that, seeing both sides is paramount. Understanding the issues is paramount. So for example, if you didn't want to vote for something because you thought it was cost restrictive, uh, it wasn't in the budget, wasn't necessary. Uh, maybe something that is better for another district, but not for your district. We really have to look at the why. Go back to why, why are we even talking about this? It was. Go back to why, why are we even talking about this? It was raised for a reason. It was identified potentially as a gap. And the gap needs to be filled, so we either understand that we can do it now, we can do it later, but it may cost more later. Um, this is a balance point between building consensus, looking at. Your opinion, because you may have something to offer that I don't know about, or you may have history, more importantly. And you say, ah, but what we're trying to accomplish may involve a contractor, manufacturer, and this is no good because we've had a failed point. Uh, within some time in the past, which is. You know, fine, as far as voting is concerned, I think that has to be based on a case by case basis, it's not a. Rule, hey, everybody's going left, so I'll go left. Um, it, I think it's more to the point of what's right within, within the organization, to have a dissenting opinion. Uh, just like the Supreme Court is one of those uh, strengths that you have within your group. Uh, if you, if you're in a deadlock. And you haven't been able to move the issue forward, then you need, you need to to create a, a case. Um, that will actually. Showcase the issues in a way that will sway one opinion or another. Um, so to answer your question, no, it's not if the herd goes left, I go left, it's more to the point of what's right, what's appropriate.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I just want to raise a point. Uh, yeah, my background is in emergency management, um, but. Over seven years in fire service. So I want to make that clear that I've been the guy running into the burning building. The medic on the street in LA, Seattle, a number of different locations, um. Flying airplanes, you know, whatever it happens to be, so when you're talking about daily in and out. Uh, that's very much something that I'm involved with, um, especially as we work with our partners at Michael Shoot, we have contracts with uh, Mountain View Fire and Rescue. So we have to be very cognizant about their abilities, their shortcomings and so on and so forth. An example, uh, we called nine one one not too long ago and we had a thirty five minute response. And then we have a station that's point, point three, point, point four miles away. Uh, turns out that house is empty because they had decided to relocate, reposition apparatus and and personnel due to the shortage, but we weren't notified. So, um, these are not foreign to me, I just want to make that clear is that. Operating in a fire service environment is something that I am familiar with and if you have a chief officer on here, you have to discuss with him.
Thank you, Commissioner Kenny, you have the next question.
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Fernhoff, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you, and you got it right, by the way, saying my last name is a pain.
Okay, good. Um, um, my question for you from our preset questions is, can you talk about your ability to obtain consensus? In difficult situations and with difficult topics.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question and I think there's lessons to be learned here throughout our society. I think right now we're talking past each other, we're not talking to each other and that begins with the, the understanding of, of, um. If we had to sit down as a group right now, let's say we had an urgency. Uh, we had to decide what we were going to do in the next twenty four hours, we call it. In our world, kind of an operational plan, what are our goals and objectives? If we couldn't decide on the goals and objectives necessarily right off the bat, and that's something that we have to understand. Um, it, it go back to the word why, why are we here? What is it that we are trying to accomplish within a certain period of time? If there's opposition, that means that there's a dissenting viewpoint, that viewpoint needs to be acknowledged, so as a group, let's say, for example. If you are the leader and you simply say to the group, I'm not interested in your opinion, this is the way we're going, you're, you're giving direction. At that point, you're not building consensus. But if you go around the group, you ask all your people in there, this is what we think we want to do, this is what we want to accomplish in the next twenty four hours. Give me your input, what do you think? The value there is everybody is heard, they're appreciated and they're represented in the process. If they are inclusive. Then it's more likely as each person hears each person's differing opinion or recommendation. That that consensus will be built in a positive way. There are times where you have to be, provide direction and that's usually within um, short space urgent. Emergency type situations, but in your case where you're deciding budgets and things like that, you don't have that level of urgency. But nonetheless, it does not take away from the level of respect that you have to have for each participant. They must be heard, they must be valued and they must be felt like they were included in the process, representing the process. So that's my, my recipe, my, my cookie recipe for building consensus.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
And. Commissioner T Fuck, it's your turn.
Hey, Michael, thanks for uh, being here, trying for applying. Um, what interests you most about South County Fire?
Really good question, um. I could come up with a, a, a really smart aleck answer, like I always wanted to take over the Lake Serene Fire Station because it's near my house and it's really kind of cool. Um, but you know. Couple of things, the districts that I have been part of have, um. They didn't. Build and pull together very smaller departments into a larger organization. So as an RFA, that interests me, the mechanics of how an RFA works. Um, I guess I have a similar experience with that in the nineties when I worked for a small startup. Um, that was doing. Uh, basically it was something called stock imagery and it was brand new technology, something called a CD ROM and this other thing that was emerging. That may or may not take off, it's called the internet. And um, we had built a, a level of, of um, of technology and a couple of millionaires. Uh, caught wind of what we were doing, they came in, they said, we'd like to merge with you. Ah, operative word, merge, they built something called, uh, and I'm like. Not a bragging point, but employee number sixty of Getty Images, Getty Images is a worldwide. Uh, company, and then from there, they didn't merge. They, they hostilely took over and then bought different organizations, which what that introduced me to is every time you take on an organization, usually have repetitive. Components, uh, you have a finance department, you have an HR department, you have all these kinds of things that that need to be. Uh, centralized and then as a part of that process, you end up having to throw out redundancy or. Or reduce those kinds of components within the organization, so an RFA. In some ways, uh, is interesting to me because I like to know more about how it's composite, how did you? Go take, you know, prior, how did you take uh, this other department, Edmund's Department, for example, and then bring them in? And still create and maintain harmony within those organizations. Um, it's, uh, so I, I'm fascinated from that point of view. Um, I fall into the bucket of what your organization does. I am, I am, I am the customer. Um, so, uh, it, it, it interests me on what your decisions are and how and. What your future uh, visions are for, for the organization, so. The conversation may be here about talking about a commissioner's position, but it's also. What your organization does and and who's involved, so.
Yeah, thank you much.
Yeah, I have a question for you all.
Oh, yeah, one more question still.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you get an opportunity to, to talk after this last question from me.
Go to Commissioner Lawrence.
Yeah. Um, so, uh. There's a scripted question, I'm not going to ask it, someone else can ask later if they really want, but I think you've covered a lot of territory there. Um, you're, you're saying that the uh, the, one of the Indian tribes is a client or do you actually work for them?
Fine.
Client, okay, um, have you been following the controversy over fireworks here in the area?
Uh, yes, uh, restrictions within um, within the county area, especially, well, we live near Pickman Point, my uh, husband and I. So, uh, this is a particular interest for us because we get a lot of folks to go down and detonate things that. Probably should be more military ordinance than, than anything else. Um, yeah, a- a- and you can imagine. Uh, I was sort of tell a story tongue in cheek here, um, working for a tribe that also has the right to. Build their own fireworks and sell their own fireworks and detonate their own fireworks on a, on a reservation. Really provides me with some challenges, so I can imagine if you guys are looking at ordinances or. Or things like this to enforce fireworks bans, um, I'm, I'm, I personally am in favor of it, but uh, what's your question about?
Well, the, um. So the council hypocritically voted to ban them in two thousand and nineteen. But um, has since not, and at the time did not vote to ban the sale of them, so you know. Right down the street, you got a fireworks uh, uh, stand and, um. Many people, well, I mean, they're, the, 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 basically, uh. The cynical view is that the council members were paid off by the people whose interest is monetary, you know, gain. At the expense of our citizens, um, that had the nefarious, uh. Hypocritical, obscene decision that they made, so. If you were to be on our board, you might have to vote, you might have to be, well, we have meetings with the council and we pressure, we put, we asked them to. Change their point of view. Would, would that be a conflict of interest for you?
No, not, not, not in the least, um, at least from my experience, um, personally. Uh, I have a family tragic story and that is I had a grandfather who was handed an M eighty. When he was very young and it blew off most of his fingers and he was on, I think he only remained with two fingers for the rest of his life, became a master carpenter and some other things, but. Still in all, that's one thing that, uh, injury, um, the cost from fire and the damage, uh, smoke. Environmental impacts, all the things that take place are, at least for me personally, uh, are something that I think of. Our society can do without and and stick to public displays of fireworks and so on and so forth, so. Uh, even though that the tribe that I work for has the ability to do so, I'm also the guy that has to mitigate the consequences for them doing so. So it's not like, um, it, it would be different, I think, I don't know if you know this or not, but most of the. Uh, fireworks stands on a travel reservation or family home and they're usually very politically connected families within travel organizations and historically so. So when you want to talk about no fireworks, you're also sort of. Um, personally attacking a family or a family's name, so you have to be ultra sensitive to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Kenny, you had a question?
Uh, Mr. Fernhoff, after listening to your, uh, you know, answer the questions, I, I have a, have a question. Kind of a, um, I don't know if it's philosophical, but, um, the, we don't currently have anybody that's been in the fire service or. Um. Um, uh, been in emergency management on the board, but in the past, we've had up to forty percent of the board has been current or former. Um, firefighters or in the fire service and that brings a different spin when you have that um, experience. Obviously, you have a lot of knowledge about the fire service, uh, and emergency management. And the, the challenge that I see for those individuals that have a background in the fire service is a desire to stick the fingers in. Get into the pie and say, well, you know, we did it back where I was at this place, we did it this way, so we need to do it that way. Um, getting into the details of the management and telling, we have, you know, we, we employ a lot of very experienced. Um, individuals, uh, to, to make lots of decisions about that and there can be a real temptation. Being from the fire service, uh, to say, no, hey, we need to do it this way, why are you doing it that way? Don't do it that way, do it this way, we did, you know, back in my, that, we did it much better back then. Um, how do you stay at, keep your fingers out of the pie, which is management and the board's not supposed to management? Manage, the board is supposed to govern and the difference between governing and management, how do you resist that temptation? To manage the chief and manage the upper senior staff on all of these issues? Because of your background and experience and stay at the governance level, how, how would you approach that?
Yeah, that, that's a really good question, I'm glad you asked that question, um. Either fortunately or unfortunately for me. Um, I come from the day and age of the fire service and the ambulance service when your back was typically ruined. The stuff that you were carrying was typically heavy and the bottles that we wore were made of steel instead of aluminum. You know, in other words, there's a, there's sort of a time warp difference. I actually approach it with more of a degree of awe rather than, hey, we did it differently, you should do it differently today. Because I did it this way, you should do it that way, it's more, for me, it's now uh, kind of a resurrection of uh, my interest in fire service and EMS. Because so many things have changed, uh, apparatus has changed, and I'll give you my naive uh, snapshot moment. One day I walked up to one of the newer fire engines and the ladder was way up on the top of the rig and I thought, oh my God, I'm, the first thing I'm thinking of. Cause I had a three fly ladder that I carried on our engine here and um, we were the only long ladder in the district. So we're considered a truck company as well, anyway, that's not of a gun to get off, you had to get above your head and pull it off and. Inevitably, the person next to me was about three feet shorter than I was, so it, it, it turned quickly into a more of a comedy act than anything else, but. Uh, realizing in a demonstration that these ladders are hydraulically lifted and they come down and they carry all this other equipment and the apparatus configurations have changed. You know, since I was um, active on, on the department, keeping this little fire department, so I think to answer your question, it's not, for me at least, it's not a matter of. Uh, telling you which way to drive, it's joining the exploration, learning what's new out there. How could this piece of apparatus or equipment or, you know, back in the day, uh. Um, uh, we used to have, it's called a model thirty, thirty gurney and it has a two man lift. Now, the, the local fire department here has upgraded to one that has a hydraulic lift and the gurney loads inside and I think. Michael Tio showed me theirs and has like flashing lights on the gurney and, and all sorts of stuff, so. These are, these are more for me, at least a discovery of what's new, what's exciting and joining. Potentially the team here and, uh, and, and discovering what's new, uh, and how can we, how can we get the new widget? To maybe either lighten or low or make us more efficient or maybe cost effective, these kinds of things, so I, I don't. My personal sense is, I, I don't think I'm going to be directing the chief, um, or, or in the department, I think my. My roots are solid, but they're humble and I'm always more willing to learn than I am to, to direct, you know, somebody in, in that sense. Now, if you're going to ask me an opinion about something that's different, um. You know, would you like to have yellow fire engines instead of red? Um, and don't laugh, when I first joined keeping this little fire department, all of our roots were yellow. All right, and I didn't realize that when we had a Hawaiian fire chief until I moved to Hawaii and I ran a unit in Hawaii. That all of the fire engines in Hawaii are yellow, so, and he was from Hawaii, so you just never know what you're going to get. But that meet, meet your expectation on the question?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome, yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Chan, you have a question?
Yeah, um, have you been watching the, our meeting on, online or?
No.
Do you do any research? Okay, so. I guess my question, what, what do you think about the three major issues that facing South County Fire?
Well, since I haven't been watching your, I think it was a directive, in fact, in your email was, you know, do not participate. I've not, I actually probably should have had an opportunity to sit in on one of your meetings and, and understood what the hot buttons were, but. Um, I'm actually, and this is why I have questions, but when we get to that, I think you're going to understand, you're going to understand more about me, once I get to the questions, I'm going to ask you. Um, than, than anything else, but no, I don't know, I don't understand what your three hot buttons are, priorities are right now for the district, I can only imagine. If I were to guess, it'd be budget expansion and sustainment of your, of your apartment, if it's not those three, then I'd be a little curious as to what, what's driving the train here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, that ends our questions for you, you indicated you had a couple of questions for us, we have some time for that.
Yeah, you know, uh, I, I. Again, I'm just going to reiterate, I am not a politician, I don't have aspirations to be in politics. Uh, I'm coming at this from a solutions point of view, uh, as a consumer of your services. Living within the district and, uh. I think I felt the need to step forward when I looked at the small geographic area that you were restricting applicants from, I thought, well. Honestly, how many people want to be a fire commissioner is the first thing that went through my mind. And I said, well, that could be interesting, I have something to offer, I have some background that, that might be good. But also I understood from the letter that went out that this is typically a, um. What is it? You, it's, it's not, it's not an appointment. You, it's, it's not, it's not an appointment, you have to run for this position, is that right?
Right.
So you're filling a temporary gap until such time that the, uh, this position then goes up on ballot, is that the way it works?
Correct.
Okay, what's the term?
Uh, the election would be next year.
Okay, so it's twelve months even, or? Or are we just like, we have to just do the math?
Sixteen months.
All right, so that, that was one of my blind spots, I, and I just kind of made the assumption, I just said, okay. I, I think they're just trying to fill in a gap here, they need somebody within the geographic area. Uh, hopefully with somebody with a little experience, so I, I don't expect that you have thousands of applicants to this position. And um, and if you, and I will leave it at this, if you find somebody better qualified that you think in, in your estimation. Is a good fit for this, I would encourage you to take that person. Um, I am a person who has. Lots of experience. Uh, but that may not be what you, you may need more. Consensus builders, you may need somebody who didn't run in and out of burning buildings or did, you know, all of that emergency medical stuff and. Those kinds of things. It really, it really depends on what your needs are. Sixty months is doable for me, but I can tell you right now, uh, because of where my foundation is and how I'm coming at this. You won't see me going into uh, uh, an election cycle and trying to convince people. Um, that I would be the right candidate. If that's goes against the grain for what you guys are all about, um, I apologize, but I think you need to know that upfront.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawrence, you have your handle?
Yeah, um. Hey, it, it doesn't take much to convince people because I got elected, so.
Okay.
I will say, I, I, I remember this question when I was appointed uh to the fire commission and uh. Kind of the same kind of mindset, I, I got involved uh with political organizations, but never wanted to run for office and. Even at it, uh, coming up next year, there's trepidation there, but at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is what's best for. The taxpayers here, making sure that we have knowledge of people that are representing them, and when it comes down to the election, um, you know, it, it's, it, it really is making sure that we're. At the time that we're investing training, I mean, you have a lot of training in the area, but training whoever has this position. Um, isn't just a sixteen month investment, if, if, if it's something that they're good at, uh, we always encourage uh, those that, uh, that apply. Uh, to, uh, to, to run for it so that we don't lose institutional knowledge, we don't lose good people that are.
Yeah.
So that is an important thing to us, just to, just to understand.
Yeah, yeah, well, I suppose sixteen months is a good trial and error period for you, and then if, um. I'm assuming that the candidate has the option, whether you like it or not, to run for the position. Um, I, I guess it's open to the public to run for a fire commissioner.
You've got about eight months before filing, uh, filing date, April about, April or May of next year is, is when the.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawrence, you wanted to add?
Yeah, well, your, your resume uh would do very well if you ran, uh, just to state that.
Well, thank you, thank you. Yeah, and again, I, I have to apologize, I'm probably being direct and not as smooth and, and as politically savvy on this uh Zoom call, but. I figured your time, you're, you're late in the evening and, and probably maybe you have other candidates you want to get to, so I think brevity is in order.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now, the only thing I ask is, you know, for the position, for the position, I got to get a cool shirt and free parking, those are usually my rules, you know.
Thank you. We'll keep that in mind.
All right. Anything else? I, I don't have any other questions for you, actually.
I think we're out of questions ourselves, so we're going to go into exec session and deliberate.
Awesome, all right, what's the uh expectation to hear back, uh, pros, cons, whatever?
Uh, we're looking to make a decision tonight, so we'll go into executive session, have conversations, and then after which we will make our announcement of our appointment.
Okay, yeah, no problem, appreciate it, I want to thank everybody that's uh on the line now, uh, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Kenny, sorry, I'm going to read from the roll call. Roland, Mr. Chan, and Cohen, is that how you say it, Penny? Comey? Reading lips.
It's coin.
All right, well, thank you very much, and uh, I'm going to take a swing at this, uh. Tef, Tefalak?
Tia Flack.
Yeah, Flack, and uh, and Chief Hobus, I'm sorry, I didn't even see on the screen there, I appreciate you being here, thank you very much, and. Melissa Blankenship, thank you so much, and Mr. Uh, Greg Urban, thank you. All right, well, you guys have a great evening, I will go ahead and clear the line and, and you go do your thing.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Do a, a different uh Zoom meeting link for this part of it, or are we just locking it out and turning off the recording, or what, how are we doing the uh, the exec session?
Can, can we take a little break, a rest and break before we start?
Yeah, we can do a fifteen minute bio break, that works, so we'll reconvene here nine forty. Uh, nine fifty-five, that work for you guys?
But then I'll be just deliver in an executive session?
Yeah, then we'll go into an executive session when we get back.
Would you be able to tell me when you get back, or are you just going to do what you did before where it was? I didn't see anything or hear anything.
Uh, Melissa.
Melissa would answer that, I think.
Um, I, well, it, it depends, I mean, you. Chair, you need to call the executive session, call it for a particular time, and then I can extend and that way. Ms. Coin will know approximately how long we will be.
Okay, have you moved out to a lobby then, or do we have a different room to go into that?
You have a different executive session. Uh, login, have you all received that?
I didn't, I only got the one for. This morning, I think.
Okay, let me, um, let me see if I can do, let me see if I can do a quick breakout instead. And that might be easier, I did send the executive session link, but. I'm not sure what happened with that, so let me see, let me do a breakout session, I'll send you that, check your email. And then Ms. Coin will uh be able to. And uh, Chief Hobus, are you also? No, okay.
Just the commissioners.
Check your email.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
Don't, the session.
Sorry, correct.
Right, when we move into it, I'll set it. So we're going to go through a break until nine fifty-five, and then at which time I'll announce moving into executive session.
Okay, you could do it now if you'd like.
Oh, then, sure, we'll go ahead and move into executive session. Um, here, nine thirty-nine for. To evaluate the qualifications of a candidate for public office pursuant to RCW four-two dot three-zero dot one-one-zero-one-H. And. We will start off with the twenty minute block for that.
So just to clarify, you are going into a brief break until from nine forty to nine fifty-five, then commencing an executive session. For twenty minutes beginning at nine fifty-five.
Correct.
Thank you.
A- and we do plan to come back to regular session to potentially make a decision.
Correct.
Okay.
You guys in a little bit?
All right, good night commissioners, good night Ms. Coin, take care. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The executive session has been extended for fifteen minutes. The executive session has been extended for fifteen minutes. The executive session has been extended by fifteen minutes.
Thank you. Which candidate?
Well, we're, we're, we're doing later on, yeah.
Yeah, well.
Apologies, Chair, can you please restate the, uh, what's come out of the executive session?
Yes, we were unable to reach consensus for one individual, so we are going to extend uh another round of interviews to uh. Some of the individuals and with uh specific questions, and hopefully that will be able to take place at next Tuesday's regular meeting.
Okay.
All right, thank you, bye, guys.
Gentlemen, good night, thank you for allowing me to be part of this.
Always.
Good night.
With that objection, the exec. The executive session has come to the regular session. And without objection, the regular meeting has been adjourned at eleven oh three PM.
And I, I want to keep going on and on tonight, Melissa, sorry.
I understand.
Okay, but if you have to shut me down and shut this off, go ahead.
I apologize, I must.